Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to note we have an interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter this evening is Antonio Bravo. Mr. Bravo, would you mind raising your hand? Standing. Thank you. And please ask him for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. El señor Bravo está ahí atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of November 15, 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID code number 87881658489. To raise your hand to speak in the particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto? Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. First on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the businesses of the month, and Councilmember Cordero will be presenting the certificates along with Chamber CEO Glenn Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
We are pleased to be back with you tonight for our monthly business of the month presentations, and we're excited about the two businesses we have to recognize tonight. So let me get started with our first business, which is our manufacturing business tonight, and that's Santa Maria Barbecue Outfitters. Santa Maria Barbecue Outfitters is a local family business which manufactures and sells traditional Santa Maria-style barbecues that they make here in Santa Maria. It's fun to note that this trade has been passed down from generation to generation within the family and now building the business that they have today. The business itself was formed in 1985, but they tell me that the family's been making these barbecues since the '60s at least, so lots of tradition there. The business has grown to include beyond, in addition to their retail sales to folks like you and I, or folks that find them online, that you can find their products in 58 Costcos now and counting, two Barbecue Land stores, and nine Ace Hardware stores, and they're continuing to sign up other resellers as well. They currently have 12 employees. It's a business which regularly donates to local organizations, school fundraisers, and supporting our community. And I think one of the fun things they've shared with us is they have a new product out that they've put out now called the RV Barbecue. It's about a two-foot by 19-inch cooking surface that you can break down and fold the entire thing into the cook, into the firebox, so that it's easy to pack away, store in your RV, and you don't have to leave the good cooking behind when you're on the trip. They also, this year, are excited they'll have their barbecues featured at the Las Vegas National Rodeo Finals. So, Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to introduce Vinnie Caico, who is the sales manager and one of the members of the family with Santa Maria Barbecue, and have her join us up here. Thank you. What a day.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of Santa Maria Barbecue Outfitters and my family, the Caico family, for nominating us for this award. We are grateful for our employees and for the community. The Chamber of Commerce treats us businesses so well in this community. We are so grateful for you, and we'll continue to promote Santa Maria Barbecue and Santa Maria, California, and all the products we sell because we are very proud of where we came from. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Vinnie? Vinnie?
Excuse me, Ms. Waterfield, you want to make a comment?
I have a question for you. Now, I heard Glenn say, did he say 58 counties in California or 58 locations across the...
58 Costco stores.
Okay, so 58, so would one of them happen to be in Missoula, Montana?
We have one to Montana. I'm not sure about Missoula.
Okay. I want you in Missoula, okay?
I will tell them that.
I'm moving there, so...
Oh, you are? Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, so that's my nearest Costco.
My grandma has a town in Rifle, Montana, so I definitely have a stake in that, too.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So you've got someone to promote it down there for you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're the sales rep.
Oh, I know.
Absolutely.
I love that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, well, it's nice to see you after a couple of months.
Yes.
It was at the, I believe it was at the, one of the Cermon de Gala.
Yes, Gala in Los Angeles.
I think it's well deserved, and thank you for everything you do, and I'm really happy that I found out that I really, through Santa Maria, the day I got my first pit from you guys. It was during my birthday, it was my first birthday gift in a long time. It was a barbecue pit from you guys, and I've been using it, and yeah, just, I'm not the best cook, but at least I got a degree.
That's okay.
The best one.
Yeah, we can help you. I meet people every day, how to cook Santa Maria barbecue.
Awesome.
And all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second business is our woman-owned business this month, which is Abbey Carpet and Floor, and Joanne Corteguera is here. Joanne, you want to come on up as well? She is the owner of the business. They provide flooring needs, installation, and materials, so carpeting, tile, wood, laminate, whatever you need. They also do window treatments, too, right? Not just the flooring. But they also do all the installation directly, and I think one of the notable items is that the installers that they use are their employees. They're not subcontractors or others, so they know that they can guarantee the quality of that work that is done. They stand behind it on their own. The business was formed in 1993. Joanne bought the business in 2021, just about a little over a year ago now, and has expanded that business now beyond residential products to include commercial, new builds, government contracts, Mr. Stowell, when you're ready to replace the carpeting we got there, and property management services as well. When they start, when she bought the business, they had three installers. They now have eight installers, so you can tell they've been able to stay very busy. They have a total of 12 employees now? I think that's correct? So the business is doing quite well and employing some of our neighbors and friends. Joanne mentioned that during COVID, and probably still, product is unpredictable in how easy it is to get deliveries, right? And freight prices continue to go up, and so she took a risk and purchased more than she normally would have to be able to guarantee to her customers that it would be available when they needed it, and that has paid off quite well. I think they're continuing to do that. And then as residential construction slowed down for a bit during that post-COVID period, they then, that's when they got into the commercial and government work as well. So they've been able to find new ways to grow and keep the business active, and their employees on the job. Big supporters of BTC, St. Joseph High School, Kiwanis, Rodeo Queen Campaigns, Elk's Rodeo, Girls' Sports in the Community, and recently were one of the major sponsors of the Airfest out at the airport. Also noted that they donate service and product to LAX for their new Road to Recovery buildings, so helping one of our local nonprofits. They've donated carpet to various churches that were doing renovations, remnants to send St. Joe's High School, and a number of other local community programs. I think it's notable that Joanne has doubled the business since she bought it in just over a year, and also notable that in addition to being a female-owned business, it's also a veteran-owned business. Joanne is a Marine, so with that, ladies and gentlemen, that's our...
Thank you, guys. This is an honor and a privilege, and I, I don't know why I'm getting emotional. I feel that my success is because I continue to give back to the community. So when you get floors from us, and it looks like everybody in here needs new floors, just know that I'm a huge supporter of this community, and I do give back, and I feel that that's why I am so successful, because I'm giving back to where my roots are. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Our next item is also a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is going to be for the upcoming holiday shopping season, whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 32.5 million small businesses in the United States representing 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And whereas, small business employees, 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, the city of Santa Maria celebrates its local and small businesses and the contributions they made to the local economy and community. Whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online or dined with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, statistics show that for every $100 spent at a local retailer, $67 will return to the community through taxes and payroll, and contributions made from local people that, you know, have their businesses, as we just heard from Joanna. Whereas, the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce champions local businesses members through a variety of promotions year-long and on Small Business Saturday, encouraging the community to keep their money in Santa Maria. And whereas, supporting local small businesses means strengthening the community, creating jobs, promoting commerce, helping nonprofits, and providing revenues for city services. Now, therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognized November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Santa Maria and encourages residents and businesses to shop at small businesses and support local retailers. And not only that, but we just need to stay focused on our business here in Santa Maria with Christmas coming up, with Thanksgiving coming up, with these wonderful holidays, and let's just grow Santa Maria to where we can and the nonprofits can benefit from us just staying in the community and having that niche. And here to accept this is Mr. Glenn Morris.
Okay. Just checking. Madam Clerk, let's see, the next, next we have the public comment period. So Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak. Staff also received two written communications, one regarding county animal services, and two from the Santa Maria High School Guitar Orchestra requesting support for their program and improving, and informing the City Council and members of the public about an upcoming performance at the Altroso Club Festival of Trees in the Town Center Mall on November 27. They were forwarded to council members, and hard copies were provided this evening at the diaz. Madam Mayor, we have six requests to speak in the building, and at the moment, there are none on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay. Bonita Sargent, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Jill Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Bonita Sargent, and I'm representing Happy Endings Animal Rescue Sanctuary. I'm addressing the topic of reviewing the contract with Santa Barbara County Animal Services. Happy Endings is primarily a horse rescue and sanctuary. We receive calls on a daily basis with concerns of abuse and neglect, and also from people who are unable to properly care for their own animals due to health or financial problems. We refer them to Santa Barbara County Animal Services. We also get calls about other animals as well, some are farm animals. We know that Animal Services is in a position to take control of the situation with investigations and experience, and has the authority to take action by removing the animal if the owner is unwilling or incapable of doing so themselves. Our biggest concern is whether Santa Barbara Humane has the necessary large animal experience. Do they have the ability to do these investigations and especially remove large animals who are needlessly suffering and get them to safety? Where will these animals go if they need to be removed? Animal Services has the experience to determine the level of health and fitness of a horse. They have enough horse-savvy staff to properly do an investigation and assess the circumstances, such as, the horse is old, that's why it's skinny, which is not an excuse for underweight horses in 90% of the cases we've seen in the last 15 years. They also have enough experience to load an abused, fearful, 1,000-pound horse into a trailer safely, which can be extremely dangerous, which can be an extremely dangerous situation if not handled properly. Happy Endings is in no position to take on more horses, both physically and financially. Are there other horse rescues in the area who would be able to take on such a task? The answer is no. Horses are incredibly expensive to maintain and twice as expensive to bring back from a neglect situation when they have been starved. If you feed a starving horse without the proper protocol and experience in place, you will kill them. These animals are victims, just as all the dogs and cats in the shelters who need a second chance at life and who need humans to properly advocate for their welfare. We are asking the council to consider all the other animals in Santa Maria. There are many more lives at risk that need a special kind of expertise that Animal Services has demonstrated over the many years we have been a nonprofit. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Jill Anderson, followed by Linda Greco.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESB. Let me remind you again, on June 7 of this year, this council approved the following motion, and I quote, "Following council discussion and public input on motion, direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement, to see if there was room for improvement, and to look at alternatives." Thank you again, Councilmembers Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero, for passing this motion. As I announced previously, the first 2022 hybrid stakeholder meeting did occur finally on September 22. I'm told a follow-up meeting of only representatives of the city and mobile home park owners was conducted on November 3. I have not received any minutes or indication of progress on any actionable item from either meeting. I appreciate the effort made by staff to schedule a follow-up meeting with us, the mobile home residents. November 29 looks like the best available date. I must admit, I'm a little surprised, though I shouldn't be, at how long it has taken to demonstrate significant progress in meeting the goal of the June 7 motion, now 23 weeks ago. At the previous city council meeting in October, I provided a representative list of issues the NESB Mobile Home Resident Team looks forward to addressing, which includes: One, we would like to help determine why a mobile home park signed the model lease enforcement agreement and apparently never offered the model lease to any resident. We would like to help determine why the owner of La Maria Mobile Home Park and eight other parks have never bothered to participate in the model lease program. Three, we would like to help find ways to include the parks that seem to be excluded due to language barriers. Four, we would like to help find ways for new and prospective mobile home purchasers to be ensured of timely participation in the program. We remain confident that fair, beneficial, mandatory, and enforceable mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria is achievable, but only when willing, open-minded participants look for positive solutions. We're ready to do our part. Thank you.
Jill Anderson, followed by Linda Greco, followed by Christopher Harris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here to speak regarding the topic of the Animal Services contract, and you have before you a letter that was signed by nine individuals representing eight different organizations, and one of those signers. I was also here last month and expressed some concerns about reconsidering the contract and whether any other entity had the ability to house the number and variety of animals that are taken in each year by Animal Services, so I won't reiterate those concerns. What I will do is ask you to consider the letter in front of you. Those organizations represent community stakeholders who've been serving the people and animals of this county and in Santa Maria for at minimum 13 years. That is my organization, Shadows Fund, and I'm the youngest of the group, and some have served for over 20 or 30 years. All of these folks have serious considerations and worries about what would happen to the people and animals in this community should a mistake be made with where that contract is placed. I ask you to give that great consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Linda Greco, followed by Christopher Harris, followed by Day Yeager.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you for this time tonight. I did visit last month also, similar to Jill Anderson, talking about the potential of the change in the Animal Services contract. Last month, I spoke on statistics. This time, I would like to speak about myself. I am from Santa Maria. I grew up here. We have family members that are in the old side of the cemetery in the beautiful section, and we have a little two-year-old granddaughter. That's a fifth-generation Santa Marian. We are very vested in our community. I loved hearing earlier the different businesses that were here. Vinnie, who's come up and spoke, is Vincenza, that I know from a little teeny tot. But what I want to say is that I am vested in our community. I am concerned about what is going on. I do hope that our city staff and the city council do take time to slow down the process and really look at what's in the RFP and what is in the contract from Santa Barbara Animal Services, and what may be missing out of that. What I do not want to have happen is the community that I've loved for so many years, the community that I have been a co-founder of a foundation for for 20 years and have been the voice for North County in the improvements that have taken place over the years for our county animals, to be just brushed aside. There's been a lot of work that's taken place to get us to that point, and I just really ask you to, like I said, slow down that process, look at the history of Santa Barbara Humane as opposed to where it is right now, beefed up, ready to go forward with a contract, and compare, and compare what the statistics have been with Animal Services, and where they stand now, and the organizations of which I was also a signer on the letter that you have, stand behind Animal Services. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christopher Harris, followed by Day Yeager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Chris Harris. I'm board president for Care for Paws. We are also a signatory on the letter dated October 28, and I wanted to highlight a specific aspect of that letter, which is about the partnerships that exist between all those organizations and other organizations that service the animal welfare community within Santa Maria. I think our concern, as we've laid out in the letter, is there are a lot of potential unintended consequences. You know, the animal welfare community here is serviced by so many organizations, and there's intricate partnerships between them. For example, for Care for Paws, we run, we're approaching nearly 100 clinic days here in Santa Maria. We provide free and low-cost vet care. The reason why we're able to find these needs and meet these needs is our partnership with Santa Barbara County Animal Services. It's the fact that they are often the first place people go whenever they have a potential surrender or potential need, they're going to reach out to the county shelter, and it's that partnership that becomes so essential for us to maintain the level of service and the quality of care for the animals here in Santa Maria. And so I want, as the other speakers have said, I want, implore you guys to take a second, to take a step back, and really look at all the consequences and all the effects that will occur with the change in service providers on this. It is, we've built a really good animal welfare community here in terms of all the partners involved, and I think there are some issues that would arise from a transition to that, and so I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and all the council. My name is Day Yeager, and I, too, am a board member with Care for Paws. We didn't mean to inundate you, but we were under the impression that we were agendized tonight. We should have checked a little more deeply. But I wanted to do something similar to what others have just talked about and be brief about it. The letter in front of you is a little extraordinary. I've served in city government for many years, and you see a lot of memos, a lot of emails, even a lot of phone calls, a lot of things in your packet that are pro or con. This is kind of an extraordinary letter. Not only is it from eight organizations, but these organizations have quite a bit of gravitas. They are experts in their differing field. This is a deep topic that the council does not have the bandwidth by its very nature to go into the second and third and fourth level of details, to see what the consequences, the ramifications of a change might be. However, these organizations are experts in their field and can offer a great deal of insight to perhaps help guide your decision. Also, their signatures reflect not only the individual, perhaps governing people in the board, et cetera, but the consensus of the board. There were also other organizations in the county with good reputations who were sympathetic but simply did not want to go public. They prefer to stay under the radar like that. To exist, an animal service organization, any one of them, simply must network, and that means with other groups and with donors, and most importantly, with the community. So these organizations are the experts to know what other orgs and services are strong and weak in what ways, including Santa Barbara County Animal Services. They collaborate, they team, they group, they help each other and the overall picture in ways that are important to know, and if a link in that existing chain changes, there could be consequences that need to be explored. They also know what is needed, what has not worked in the past, what does work if it can only be effected, and what direction to go in. So really, you are, it is not your job to be experts in animal welfare and the relationship between a community and its animals and its people, but I suggest very much that you consider what often happens in controversial and complex topics that the council cannot drop all its administrative, budgetary, and other heavy burdens to delve deeply into, which is to form a committee... which is to form a committee, even a subcommittee of the council, a task force to work in a little more depth, just to go to the next level or two, to tease apart the issues at the heart of this. It could be just a matter of weeks. Call in some interested parties and have their report come back to you. I just urge you not to rush into this because it suddenly pops up on your agenda early. It's a sensitive and vital life-saving operation, and please, I hope that you will be able to farm out a little more research and take in the benefit of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Yeager. Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Silwell, did you wish to make any comments? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Council, Madam Mayor and council members, for item 3G on the consent calendar regarding the Northman subdivision and final map, a minor correction was made after the posting of the agenda to update the subdivision improvement agreement to include a security for the planting of street trees. Copies of the revised agreement were emailed to council members earlier today, as well as provided a hard copy at the DIES. It's also been updated online, on the online versions of tonight's agenda.
Anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar submitted with the changes that the clerk just read.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield. Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments with an update regarding its regional broadband strategy project.
Mr. Marisick, would you like to do the introductions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you know, the city has partnered with SB CAG, the Broadband Consortium of the Pacific Coast, the County of Santa Barbara, and six other cities to develop a regional broadband strategic plan. Mike Becker and Bill Simmons are here today to share an update on the project, including activities completed to date, results of data collection, and next steps. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Becker.
Good evening, Mr. Becker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Patino, and council members. My name's Mike Becker. I'm the Director of Planning at Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, or SB CAG. First, I would like to thank you for allowing us to make this presentation today, and also I want to introduce Dr. Bill Simmons, who's going to be doing much of the presentation, and Shelby Arthur, who will be, they'll be tag teaming the presentation. My remarks will be brief. I just wanted to highlight how we got to where we are with this project. Last fall, the SB CAG board approached the executive director and directed her to build support for developing a broadband strategic plan for the region. And Margie Kern, the executive director, and Bill Simmons made the rounds to all eight city councils within the region, Board of Supervisors, and got support from every local government in the county to develop this strategic plan, and it provided a financial contribution to the project. SB CAG, in turn, hired the Broadband Consortium of the Pacific Coast to perform the work. And then through the process, we had 12 community events. I recall one right next door at the library. I think that was one of the first ones. We also, we inventoryed what's currently on the ground in Santa Barbara County, where are the holes, and identifying what work needs to be done as we move forward. And I wanted to mention that the whole reason why we got into this project is the state and federal governments have made broadband connectivity and affordability a priority, and they put the money behind it to make it a priority. So, this project is to position the region and all the cities in the county, all the governments, to be ready to start making the improvements that that money will fund. The project has been going on for almost a year now, and we're just about done. During the December SB CAG board meeting, the board would present the final version, and that'll conclude the project, and that will in turn take it from the planning phase to the implementation phase. And that was an interesting process because SB CAG's typically in the transportation business, with a few exceptions. Until this project, we have not been in the broadband business. So, the concern was, once this project's done, how does it get implemented, if there's nobody there to pick it up? But I'm happy to say that SB CAG and the county each, we partnered together, and we applied to the California Public Utilities Commission for a local agency technical assistance grant. We expect to receive that grant during the CPUC's meeting in December, and that will enable SB CAG to stand something up within SB CAG, to coordinate the efforts throughout the region, to work between the public sector, the private sector, and to actually make real-world improvements to broadband connectivity and affordability in Santa Barbara County. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Simmons, and he's going to talk about the planning process.
Thank you, Mike. It's a pleasure to be before you. Thank you for the invitation to be here tonight, and wow, we've come a long way in a year. I'm with the Broadband Consortium of the Pacific Coast, and for those of you that don't know what a consortium is, we're funded by the California Public Utilities Commission, and broadband is happening. I can't, we've talked about it, I think, here in the past, but if you look what happened during the pandemic and how life has changed, it's phenomenal. Well, all of these resources have flown from the state to the feds, right here in the local area. As a consortium, our job is to try to make sense out of it, try to really make it local. For us to earn our money from the California Public Utilities Commission, we've got to make sure that all of the communities are understanding it, are getting it, applying for the funds, bringing it home, and that's part of what we do. This has been a very unique partnership because the Santa Barbara County strategy has allowed us to dig deeper and actually start problem solving and helping prioritize, and it's been a wonderful learning experience for us to go through this with SB CAG and to do this work. My goal tonight, our goal tonight, is to just do a quick flyover, just a few slides, but because it's been an ongoing conversation, to really take the time to, everybody sees this word broadband in a different way, to spend some time for Q and A, to respond to your questions and what you think about it, what are you perceiving in terms of what we've said and the journey that we've taken together? And with that, I'm going to get started and see if this works. Yep. We'll talk about the strategy and project highlights. I trust that most of you perhaps have seen our draft already. It's pretty raw, it's rough, it's about 100 pages, and it's black and white, single-spaced. I assure you that we're going to make it pretty before we're said and done, but the draft document is out, and so we're designing it where you can almost pull out an insert with your city's name on it, because it's very customized to the conversations that we've had and the data that we've collected. We say that we're grant-ready because there's literally copy within those portions, we believe, that will be cut and paste into the applications for funding. So, we'll do a quick summary and then talk about the data collection recommendations, and I'm going to move on to this timeline. You've probably seen it before, the last time Maria or myself was up talking to you and providing you a statutory report. What's new and different about this is the green boxes have moved to the far right. They started on the far left, but that's where we are in the project. And as I said, the draft is done. We are now in the process of finalizing it, publishing it, making it heart-bound and copied. You'll all get a copy of it. I wouldn't necessarily want to put it on your coffee tables, but it is a very, very significant document and really representative of a lot of work, a lot of conversations, a lot of data gathering. Simply stated, we're in the home stretch. So, one of the unique things about this, I talk about grant-ready. SB 156 is the legislation that the governor put forth for broadband and is driving an awful lot of this. There's two pieces of the broadband equation. There's the infrastructure piece, and there's the people piece. And so, we've tackled both pieces. I have to come at this from an IT perspective, and I really am comfortable in the infrastructure piece, and I talk to colleagues, Mr. Marisick, for example, in the IT background, and we kind of harmonize on the tech, but there is this whole people piece too, and the way it's all being set up is the infrastructure money starts flowing right after the first of the year and the first quarter, and now the planning is starting for the people piece as well. And so, when you look at the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Initiative, BEED, the federal government put 64 billion. There's a significant chunk of change in terms of, in Sacramento, planning for statewide deployment. Shelby will be able to tell you more about this as we get into it. And so, there is a method to the madness. There is a logic. We're going to build infrastructure, and then we're going to connect people, and this is something that we're doing very fast because the funds expire in '26, highest level. So, ready or not, it's beginning, and it's coming. And some of the project highlights, as well as the GIS tool we've developed, and I'll be sharing some of that on the next slide as well. It really is unprecedented to look at all the data that you can aggregate from various sources that have neighborhoods of need, that has connectivity that's been reported, and what the data tells you. We've spent a lot of time talking about projects and capturing status and going back and forth in terms of narratives. Overall, Santa Maria is a smart city, and this, I remember a consortium meeting quite a bit prior to the pandemic, and you're now city manager, he wasn't city manager at the time, was giving a presentation on the smart city. You guys have done, you're out there, and from the fiber loop to talking about anchor institutions, to the networks, you really are way ahead of the pack, and I just want to applaud, you know, say that we keep on going. I hope, it's an exciting time, and you've been doing this pre-pandemic, and I'm very, very impressed. Imagine a world that's green. So, this is data, and it comes out of our GIS system, and I don't mean green as in green, but green as in, you know, certain speeds, if you will, in terms of CPUC. The base map, where you have the squares, and they're green, orange, and yellow, that's CPUC data. That's what's reported to the Public Utilities Commission based on what the providers report. And so, we know, under the old qualification data, that the 25-3 standard is the green, and the unserved area is the yellow, and the priority unserved is the red, and that's what the map looks like from where Sacramento sees you, actually CPUC's in San Francisco. Now, the dots, that's speed test data, and that's to a completely different standard. The standard of SB 156, the new legislation that came out, is 100-100, that's how fast the speeds are. And so, the green dots, and it's hard to see from this angle, but the green dots are actually at the 100-100 speeds. The yellow dots are 25 to 100, and the red are less than 25 in terms of speeds. We've started a process here when we're collecting this data, and what the importance about this process is, the more data you have, the more important it becomes, because as you do apply for data, for, there's reasons, some reasons may be embedded into the technology that's being used, or the type of device that was being measured on, but when you see clusters and you see groups, you start developing trends, and when it comes to funding, this kind of data is going to be important, because there are new maps coming out from FCC this next week, there's more refreshed data coming to CPUC. When it comes to a lot of these grants, this data is going to get more and more important. We started collecting it through this process. We really would like to build in this next year continued collection practices. So, as the conversation continues, we're still collecting data.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you're talking about speed test data, when you have the city of Santa Maria, there are not a lot of green dots there, so there's not a lot of high testing, not a lot of high speeds, but then I look at Guadalupe, and they have a lot of green dots, so...
Is that because the population is smaller in Guadalupe and, you know, condensed, or is, as versus Santa Maria, and we're all over the place?
Guadalupe has charter service.
Okay.
Yeah, and so there...
Is that a better service?
No, no, I think you have, you may have charter yourself. I'm not sure exactly, but Guadalupe is not unserved from a technology standpoint. The infrastructure, there is infrastructure in the town. The problem is, and it was very interesting, now that you're triggering some thoughts, there's a number of fiber sources in Guadalupe. Guadalupe's issues tend to be more on the people's side, the literacy side, the digital skill side, but it's not because broadband's not available. In fact, in Guadalupe, there was a number of speed tests that came out of schools. They have the, I believe, scenic network in there in terms of what was happening, in terms of high-speed internet in the classroom and some of those things. So, when we did our community outreach there, and I wish Maria and Kelly were here because she was very much part of the design of all this, we were able to get the schools very much helping us to get the speed test data. If it was on the school's network, it was going to be high-speed. And so, that, I'm speculating, I'd have to go back and look at the actual data points to confirm that, but I do remember that conversation taking place on a number of different cases, that there were high-speed sources being used for the data testing there.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. But, doesn't take away from the people's side of the equation. There is a conversation that needs to occur there, and it really is tied to the literacy side, and the BEED funding will be, you know, very, very important for Guadalupe. With that as my warm-up for Shelby, the next slides talk about the specifics and do a little bit of a deep dive into the recommendations of the report.
Thank you for having us. My name's Shelby Arthur, and the next couple slides, I'll go through the recommended actions specifically for Santa Maria locally, and then also some regional opportunities that you can collaborate on across the county. So, rather than read the slides, they're far away, it's tiny print, what I'll do is highlight some key priorities for the city of Santa Maria. They fall into the categories of the last mile, so connecting folks in their homes or businesses from that fabulous fiber ring that Santa Maria has already been building out. Increasing your regional resiliency, so making sure that there's more than one way to connect for the community members, that we have one point is cut off through some sort of emergency or other event, the community can still access the internet and access emergency services and what they need in order to connect. The third priority is local adoption. So, this is what Bill's talking about, the people piece. Helping people afford the internet and access affordability programs that help them cover the costs of their internet, maybe increasing community access points and community Wi-Fi or community internet services, and then also helping to improve literacy programs, so digital literacy, digital literacy programs that are multilingual and that are culturally responsive and that progress. So, as someone builds one skill set, it opens up a whole new world of more skill sets that they can also improve upon as needed. And then finally, of course, the last mile, or the smart city priority as well, which you're already a little involved in. Some of the key partnerships that you can focus on, SB CAG, so continuing to work with SB CAG, particularly when it comes to last mile planning and middle mile collaboration with the Golden State Network. The Digital Equity Coalition, the Digital Equity Coalition just launched last week with the Steering Committee meeting. The Santa Barbara Foundation is leading the convening of the Digital Equity Coalition, and their aim is to increase adoption rates through promotion of the Affordable Connectivity Program, identifying other ways to help community members across the county to access affordable options for internet, and then finally, to help amplify and extend some of the great digital literacy programs that are already out there in the community, and then identify gaps where we need additional programs and provide resources to help grow them. Another key partnership that you can look at is the school system, particularly in the city of Santa Maria. The U.S. Census says that just about a third of the city of Santa Maria are children under 18. 18. And so accessing the schools, providing them the resources to do some outreach for affordability, to help them assess what digital literacy needs are out there for families, is a great way for you to get out into the community, especially if you can provide them the support to build capacity with their staff and to make sure that they have the time and the resources they need to help with this type of initiative. Some of the primary activities that are outlined for the city of Santa Maria here on this slide. The first one is to continue to push the speed test. So we are still collecting speed test data, that last slide that showed all the dots. We would love to get more dots on that page. As the funding rolls out over the next few years, it will be really important to be able to say, hey, you know what? That map that you've provided us that says this community is already served, well, we ran some speed tests, and we have some data points that show that that's not exactly accurate for whatever reason. And that reason can be investigated, that can be something you can assess as a city, but it will become important for you to have that information already. So we have prepared a press release, it's going out pretty soon, to the tri-county area to remind people that we're still collecting this speed test data, and we would love your support on that. You will have access to those data points, and you can use this GIS platform that we have compiled the information on. So continuing to push the speed tests, looking at the gaps and the opportunities between your anchor institutions. I know that you've done great work building that fiber loop, but continuing to find out, you know, beyond that, where can we start to anchor these connections to reach the communities that are a little bit outside of that area. Digital literacy and upskilling initiatives, you can collaborate with the schools, again, also with Allen Hancock. They have great access in the community, they're a trusted source. So working with them to understand what their digital literacy programs are, where there might be some gaps that can be filled. And then also working with the Chamber and the Workforce Development, American Job Center that's over in Santa Maria, to identify what business needs there are, right? Where is the labor force needing to upskill? We heard some feedback that ag, the ag sector actually does rely a bit on technology, and we need to make sure that the folks who are working in that market also have the skills that they need to be able to support growth in that area. Supporting community outreach for ACP enrollment. ACP refers to the Affordable Connectivity Program. This is a program, a federal program, that subsidizes internet access and the cost of an internet plan for $30 for families who qualify. This is something that people can sign up for, and then they can apply it to their internet plan. The major providers that service Santa Maria do accept ACP subsidies, but it's a matter of helping people who are eligible for that subsidy register for it, and then also helping them apply it to their internet provider, to their internet plan. There are some great organizations in town that are doing this work, so making sure that you connect with them and that they have the support that they need to do that outreach. Do you want me to pause for a question?
Yep.
Ms. Escobedo, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, in regards to the ACP is the Affordable Connectivity Program, right?
Mm-hmm.
So in order for you to sign up to have access to this program, which helps the community to have access to, you know, to get connected, they need to do it online, right?
Not always, actually. There's a paper application as well that can be submitted. What we have found is more effective is holding maybe enrollment events where people can come to an organization that can help them with the online application. They do need to register for an email address to be able to receive it, right? So it's a multi-step process that needs a lot of support. It's not something that we can just mark it out to the community and say, go for it, you got this. No, it does require some support. So there are a couple of organizations that I can recommend that are doing this work already by bringing the connectivity to the location and helping people sign up. If they need to, helping them sign up on a paper form, and then going to their offices and inputting it on their behalf.
And anybody can apply for that?
Anyone who is eligible. So there are several qualifiers. If you are a CalFresh recipient, Medicare, if your child is on the National School Lunch Program, what are some of the other qualifiers? There's an income eligibility range as well.
Pell.
Oh, yeah, if you're a Pell Grant recipient. So, you know, we've already actually been working a bit with some of the organizations in Santa Maria and had several events already. Allen Hancock did an event while they were doing the food distribution, for example. The Department of Social Services held an event. The American GI Forum is doing great work, holding a lot of events and helping people enroll in that program.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned that the, they fill out these paperwork or online, and they can apply for assistance. Are all internet providers mandated to accept that assistance, or do they have to go to a specific provider?
Internet providers opt in to participate in the subsidy. So not all internet providers have opted in. I believe all the major providers that serve this area have opted in. I believe that one of the providers opted into the $30 per month subsidy. There's a second part to that program, and that's a $100 credit towards a device, so a laptop or a desktop computer that you can have in your home. It's $100 credit towards it. I believe one of the providers does not participate in that part of the program, but the other major providers do participate.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Escobedo.
Yeah, but I think it's, you know, when you talk, mentioned about having these sessions where we can help the community to sign up, I think it's, that's great, and hopefully maybe we can, the city, we can put together maybe something in the library and, you know, invite everybody to sign that up.
Yeah, in fact, Mr. Stillwell and I were talking about that, doing the library and then collaborating also with the schools, because a lot of the parents use their kids for translation. So if they would be able to go to the high schools or to the elementary school districts. So we should be able to cover our community real well.
Yeah, let's work together, let's make that happen. I think that there's a lot of opportunity to do that. The last activity that I would just draw your attention to focus on is also looking at BEED funding. So Bill mentioned the broadband equity access deployment funding. That is not coming out this year. We're looking at late 2023, early '24 when that, but keep an eye on it. Some of the recommended projects, based on our analysis of what's going on in Santa Maria already, would be that you may be able to be eligible for BEED funding to expand the community network that's already here, to upgrade any community Wi-Fi services that you have, to provide people a faster speed of access, or maybe a bigger breadth of distance, and then also helping to fund programs to increase adoption, whether that's affordability or digital literacy and access. When you look at digital literacy, you're looking at a really broad spectrum. You're looking at it from people who need help plugging in a computer and learning how to turn it on and understanding what it looks like, and all the way up to people who maybe just want to improve their positioning for a better job, or they need a certification to change careers. So you need a very wide range of programs for that. And BEED funding may be able to work with other funding sources and your commitment to help. Any other questions on the local priorities? So I'll just move into the regional actions. You'll have to excuse me for bringing up my phone, but I can't see that far. But what you'll see is the green boxes here are things that are already in process. So you'll see that we've already, we're completing the strategy. In terms of middle mile network, the North County Study, which is funded through an EDA grant that the Santa Inez Band of Schumash and the Econ Alliance received, they just put out their RFP for that, so they're recruiting someone to design and do the work on that grant to help with the North County Fiber Ring Study. Last mile actions that are already happening regionally is talking to telecoms, really encouraging public-private collaboration that hopefully will draw the price down as much as possible while still encouraging that economic development, that business development here locally. Under adoption, there are a lot of efforts around affordability and digital literacy, so I won't rehash those. But I do want to draw your attention to the bottom green box there. Santa Barbara Foundation and the Broadband Consortium have been working together to form the Digital Equity Coalition, and we have been already implementing affordability events and signups for this. So we'd love to work together again with you. Some of the things to look at regionally that we'd like you to just keep in mind as you decide what you're going to add into your action plan, to really continue tracking the LADA funding grants that SB CAG and the County of Santa Barbara have applied for, looking at the development of the JPA and the EIR, programmatic EIR, in order to assess more of the regional priorities and the feasibility of implementing some of this work in the county, supporting SB CAG and continuing to work with them as partners in this work. In terms of the middle mile, completing some more design and middle mile design, working with the Golden State Network and SB CAG. SB CAG is interested in taking the lead on this, so really just being a partner in that. In terms of last mile, again, keeping your eye on the BEED funding and also CPUC funding that might be available. There's CASF grants, California Advanced Services Fund grants, that can be used for adoption and for digital literacy, as well as public housing grants that can, that have been awarded, actually, to the area. I believe Santa Barbara County received nine out of the 19 that were granted statewide. Santa Barbara County received nine to help link up public housing units to high-speed internet opportunities. So really keeping your eye on those types of funding sources and working together as a community here, but also maybe regionally, to submit applications. And we will be happy to continue giving you some of that information. We are hosting a webinar on grant writing for broadband applications as well, and we'll have more opportunities to engage on as the funding determine, continues to be determined and continues to be put out there for public consumption. So this is just a little information about what to look for in the next few months. Do you have any questions about what we've covered or what's coming up?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
So I know being on that committee has been very exciting, because everyone's going in the same direction, and we're, there's nobody that's hesitating, we're willing to help other communities that aren't quite as advanced as we are. So it's going great, and I want to thank all of you so much for your help. Appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for being here tonight. No request to speak, Madam Clerk? Hand down. Okay. And next, we have an appointment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and give the staff report?
The City Council will consider making one appointment to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Madam Mayor and members of the council, as mentioned, the request before you tonight is to make an appointment to the Block Grants Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term ending in July 2024. There are several vacancies on the committee at this time, two of which are nominations by Councilmember Waterfield and one for Councilmember Soto. Staff received one new application from Audrey Bustamante. Councilmember Waterfield has indicated an interest in nominating Ms. Bustamante to the committee. With a nomination this evening, the appointment would then be confirmed by the mayor with ratification by the City Council. That completes my report.
Okay, Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I met Audrey Bustamante the day of the empty bowls. Amazing young lady. She was ready to get involved. She's, I read her resume, she's just a hard-working young lady that wants to know how she can get involved in the city of Santa Maria. So I told her, you just happen to be talking to the right person. I happened to have an appointment for my Block Grants Advisory Committee, asked her to go online and look at it and read up about it and see what she thought about it. And we talked, and I really wanted her for this appointment. So it is a pleasure and honor to nominate Audrey Bustamante for the Block Grants Advisory Committee.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
I spoke to her on the telephone after you spoke to her.
I'll tell you what, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, now you can talk.
I spoke to her on the phone, and I came away after about a 20-minute conversation with exactly the same feeling that she just wants to do something, she just wants to work hard and be a working part of the community and a problem solver. So I was really impressed by the conversation that we had on the phone, and she mentioned your name, and I think you got finished with talking to her. She went home, filled out the application.
Yes, that same day.
And I, I happened to be looking in my emails, so I called her, and all this happened in just a couple of hours, just a few hours.
It absolutely did.
So she was impressed about the efficiency of us, and I said, well, it's not normally like this.
But did you get to read her resume?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. She was just, she's just work, work, work. She's wonderful. The best part is she was from Arizona, which is where I'm originally from. It's like, okay, we're a match.
She was just very impressive, young lady. And I called the clerk's office and left a message that, as to how we felt about her.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, awesome.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a regular...
Wait, wait, Ms. Bustamante is here, and I would like her to come up to the podium and just say a few words. Audrey, I got you off.
Thank you so much for having me. Yeah, so I'm originally from Arizona, and I moved here almost six years ago.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to move the mic down so you can speak into it.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay. I moved here about six years ago, and I just fell in love with the community. I'm Mexican, and that's predominantly the people that are here, and I just fell in love with how much it felt like home. I remember visiting my grandma so much in Mexico, and it just, I just felt like I was at grandma's house everywhere I went. And when I started working here, I started getting involved a lot and started meeting a lot of people from the city. And just, I just really fell in love with just how people are, how welcoming everybody is here, and that's really what drove me to kind of want to get more involved. I'm just very excited to just be a part of changing the community, helping the community. And yeah, thank you very much.
Well, be prepared for a lot of hard work, because that is a great committee, and you do do your due diligence to it, and I think you're a perfect fit for it.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Sorry.
Yes.
And it's really interesting what you're mentioning, because something really, something really, really similar happened to me when I visited Santa Maria. I moved to Santa Maria permanently six years ago, five years ago approximately. And, you know, I was coming for a couple of months, but now here we are. So, and I was really excited, like you, to be involved in the city, so maybe one day you'll be, if that's what you want, you'll be sitting here.
Absolutely. That's my goal. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider updates to the Santa Maria Municipal Code relating to building and fire codes in alignment with the recently adopted State of California Building Codes that will take effect January 1st, 2023.
And the staff report is to be made by Director of Community Development, Mr. Ring.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a brief presentation on amendments to building and fire codes. I also like to add, I've been here almost six years as well, so. The building codes are amended every three years, and the California Building Standards Commission adopts new state standards, which cities and counties are mandated to adopt. The 2022 California Building Codes are codified in the Santa Maria Municipal Code and adopted by reference. So this ordinance would amend Title IX by adopting the 2022 California Building Code, Historical Code, Mechanical Code, Residential Code... historical code, mechanical code, residential code, existing building code, electrical code, plumbing code, fire code, and makes a minor amendment to the previously adopted 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. So these are the codes that our plan checkers use to review the plans. These are the codes that our building inspectors refer to when they do inspections. Same thing with our reviewers and our fire prevention team and our inspectors in fire prevention. No significant changes to the 2022 Building Code updates. We did expand some language in the International Property Maintenance Code to give our staff more tools for enforcement. The code updates will take effect in January 1, 2023. And that's the recommendation that the City Council introduced for first reading and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, the ordinance amending the portions of Title IX concerning building and fire code regulations. Fire Marshal Jim Austin is here, Building Official Alex Rodriguez is here, if you have any detailed questions.
Are there any questions from the council?
I have a comment.
Ms. Waterfield?
I know that in the report, there's no financial, any kind of financial heaviness to the city, but in your estimation, what does this do to people that want to build? And, you know, they have to go by the codes. And the one thing I'm just thinking of as I'm listening to is that five-story building that's going up on Santa Maria Way, and who's checking the codes for that building? Because that's done by the state. We had no say-so in that one, and that just was SB 35, and so I'm looking at the changes that, you know, are coming, and who's, I don't even see an elevator in that five-story structure.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Waterfield, so two things. There's kind of a general comment about building codes. I think when builders have to develop to a certain standard, of course, there are associated And at least with this particular code update, there are no significant changes. But in reference to the construction that's happening on Santa Maria Way and Miller, that was a different type of construction. There is an elevator, but I can defer to the Building Official, Alex Rodriguez, if he wants to add additional information about that particular type of construction. It is unique to Santa Maria.
It is. It's very unique. And so do they have to adhere to different building codes? My question. Because I'm getting a lot of questions about this building and why did we do this and all this other stuff, and I just said, "It's, you know, Sacramento, coming down here and interfering."
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I try to answer your questions to the best of my ability. The Santa Maria Senior Studios project was planned, reviewed, but it's planned, reviewed at the state level. That type of construction is considered modular construction, and there's an entire process at the state level for that to get reviewed and approved, except for the work that happens on-site is deferred and handled by the local jurisdiction, in this case, the city of Santa Maria. And part of the approved plans include a very detailed list of everything that's handled as far as inspections and reviews at the state level and through their third-party inspection agencies and plan review agencies that actually visit periodically the manufacturing plant where they're manufactured. But then the list goes on to specify what are the things that are going to be handled by the local jurisdiction on-site. As you can imagine, you know, there's all the accessible routes from the parking and from the public right of way to the buildings and the interconnections of, you know, how once it gets all put together. So, and by the way, that project does actually have two elevators. You can only see one from the outside, and one of them is internal. So it is an elevator.
And how do they earthquake-proof modules?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, it's actually a very strong building, and each individual unit is constructed in a way that, of course, you may have seen or observed them lift them or crane them into place. They are extremely strong, and in fact, you could argue that they're overbuilt because they have to withstand the transportation and the craning into place. But then they're interconnected in a way where the sheer transfer, the loads all the way from the roof are transferred all the way down to the foundation through a series of connectors and hardware and hold downs and even welded plates down from the foundation. So in fact, that process literally has to be done after every single unit is set, and so we, one of the requirements for this project was that there was a full-time, continuous, third-party independent inspector there to verify that all these connections were happening, because as soon as those connections were done, they were ready to set the next one.
Right. It's going up very fast.
Yes, no question about it.
Very fast.
So this is all verified, and then we'll receive reports from the third-party independent inspection agency that they'll deliver to myself and the city, and we'll approve it so that the process can move on.
So is there going to be more modulars? Because it looks like there's a lot of space for more modulars to be placed there, and that's what my constituents are asking me. What the heck is going on?
So on that project, there was originally intended to be another building of similar size and modular construction, but we're not sure if they're going to continue with that. If they do, I don't think it's going to be an SB 35 project because they've, I think, exhausted some timeline or something, and so that particular one might be able to go through the normal discretionary process. But as far as modular construction, it does appear like that is something that developers will want to explore, you know, the possibility using that type of construction in the future. The general contractor and slash developer who's for this project has at least another five to seven projects currently going on right now throughout the state of California.
So what is the cost of that project?
I think, well, I don't know their exact cost, but I think the advantage is that they have a lot more control of the construction, you know, because it's in a controlled environment, a manufacturing facility, and this particular one is in Idaho, Boise, Idaho. And so they can control the cost and the quality. But yeah, I'm skeptical myself about whether there's a ton of savings, because they had the manufacturing, that took some time, they had to transport them here, and yes, they went up quickly, but there's still a ton of work to bring it all to a final, including the exterior finishes, there's quite a bit interior, and so, you know, but there must be some advantage, otherwise why would we be doing that?
Well, the reason I ask is I'm so darn curious, because we just, what, maybe a few years ago, we built that low-income housing right there on Depot and Main Street, and what did that end up costing for low house? What was it, 70 apartments? It cost $38 million for that? So I'm curious, state-controlled versus state-controlled, but we, you know, the people down here that are paying for out-of-their-pockets everything, what the difference that cost is going to be? And these units are what, 400 units?
180.
Is it 180? Okay, so it might have been more with the other ones.
This first building is 180.
The first one's 180.
If they do, the second one, it's identical to be a combined 360.
So I'm curious, if you could get that number to me, because, you know, it's been, what, three, four years since the one on Depot Street, and obviously, the cost of materials and labor and everything has gone up. But if that project ends up being lower than what that project was, there's something going on. I don't know what it is. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, and if I could add to something that Chun tried to answer for you earlier regarding the main changes to this code cycle, they're largely energy efficiency-driven, the biggest changes to the codes. Things about improving energy efficiency for homes and just buildings in general, reducing the energy consumption and limiting the emissions to make them healthier buildings. Those are the big, biggest changes that we're seeing this code cycle, mostly energy, especially here in the state of California.
And I'm sure those items are very expensive.
You know, I can give you a brief example. One of the things that the state is really pushing hard on is going to be heat pumps, which are electrically driven and to heat water and to heat your homes as opposed to conventional heating and ventilation air-conditioning systems, which may run on natural gas.
And that's scary, because on hot days, we can't even, you know, pump up an electric car, because we're going to go, we're going to go in the dark zone.
I don't know where we're going to get all this energy from. The other big change, or one of the other big energy-efficient changes is going to be making buildings, homes and buildings, and even multifamily buildings, more electric-ready so that when owners want to start making that change over, they're ready to do so. And then even things like battery storage systems, which, you know, will allow people to have energy and either brown out or complete out, just, those are probably the biggest changes that we're seeing.
Interesting. Okay, thank you very much. That was real informative.
I know. I have received a lot of comments from people about that SB 35 units going up there, too. A lot of people have called me, and I had to go out and look at, to see what they were talking about, because I thought, because they're plunking all these modulars one on top of the other, so it's different.
I'm hopeful that the finished product will, yeah.
Thank you for being hopeful.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I was at one of the meetings for the housing element, and it's interesting when people are commenting, and all the comments are going to be put together, but when people are commenting and critiquing some of the things that are done in the city of Santa Maria, and I don't speak when I go to those meetings, I go to there and listen, but they think that we're coming up with these bad ideas, not the state, so it's really interesting. Any questions from the council at all? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not. Okay, I'll bring this item back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
I move the recommendation as proposed by staff.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion to introduce the ordinance amending the building and fire code regulations, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have another business, regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the quarterly financial report for the first quarter ending September 30, 2022, and budget amendments to approve operational changes to the 2022-23 budget.
And the staff report is to be made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the first quarter ended September 30, 2022. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and enterprise funds. The beginning fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unaudited balance as of July 1, 2022. Concerning revenues, sales tax revenues or receipts through September are nearly $710,000 or 9.9% greater than the first quarter last fiscal year. The increase is primarily due to significantly higher fuel prices than the previous year. Growth in restaurants and hotels, general consumer goods, and autos and transportation industry categories also contributed to the increase in revenues. Through September, TOT receipts are approximately $69,000 or 8.6% more than last fiscal year and are exceeding estimates by about $81,000 or 2.6%. The increase in revenues is due to the tourism industry's continued recovery from the pandemic, coupled with consumers viewing Santa Maria as a viable lodging option when visiting the central coast. Permit revenue is at 44% of the budget, or about $1.4 million, and is approximately $570,000 greater than the first quarter of last fiscal year. The increase is the result of several factors, including a significant volume of permits issued for accessory dwelling units, commercial tenant improvements, the extensive renovation of Los Adobes de María Apartments, the expansion of the Cal Giant Packing Facility, and several new townhome apartments by Hassel Builders. Turning to general fund expenditures, they are at 19.7% of budget and include $3.6 million or about 5.8% in salary savings due to vacancies in most operational departments. Staff expects to achieve additional salary savings because the city, like most businesses, is having difficulty finding and retaining personnel in the current labor market. This budget savings, combined with the latest revenue estimates, are expected to eliminate the need for the $2.7 million LEAF transfer that was budgeted to help balance the budget. Concerning Measure U, through the first quarter, revenues are ahead of budget at 26.7% or $6.9 million. Expenditures are at 16.8% of budget or about $2.7 million under budget. Most of the budget underrun, $1.6 million, is in the fire department and is primarily due to budgeted capital projects and equipment purchases that are expected to occur later in the year. The police department is under budget by about $788,000 due to vacant positions and planned capital purchases. Community development, library, and recreation and parks programs are under budget because of challenges in hiring staff to fill vacant positions. Through September, 89% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 6% on youth services, and 5% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenues exceeded expenditures by $2 million. Revenues increased 6.4% or just over $745,000 compared to the prior year. As a result, that is as a result of higher revenues generated through increases in City Council-approved water rates and user fees. Expenses are $2.8 million less than last year, primarily due to lower debt service payment of approximately $749,000 for the 2021A refunding bonds compared to the prior year's first-quarter payment of $3.8 million for the 1997 Certificate of Participation and 2012A refunding bonds. Water and wastewater operational expenses are under budget by 5% because of personnel savings and vacant positions and timing of payment of ongoing maintenance and contractual service agreements. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $2.6 million due to operational costs being under budget by approximately $2.1 million or 61%, coupled with very minimal capital expenditures made during the first three months of the fiscal year. The transit fund, first quarter revenues are more than expenditures by about $65,000. Fair revenue through the first quarter is nearly $120,000, which is about 48% or $210,000 less than fares earned through the first quarter of the prior year. This variance is due to a greater number of bus passes purchased by Santa Maria Joint Union High School District in the first quarter of the prior year, as well as a one-time purchase of bus passes made in July of 2021 by Allen Hancock College. Capital expenditures of $1.6 million for the purchase of two electric replacement buses. The fare box ratio through September 30, 2022 is 14.8% based on the fares received and operating expenses paid to date. In conjunction with the first quarter financial report, staff is recommending six personnel and budget amendments presented for council's consideration. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the first quarter amendments.
Wait, just, yeah, I've got a public comment first. They'll let you do it. Okay. Do we have any requests to speak or written?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, adopt, well, can I approve both? I'd like to make a motion, adopt, well, can I approve both recommendations, can I make a move, a motion approving both recommendation, as, recommendations as proposed by staff?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any, any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield? Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. The next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. So two items of note tonight, with tonight's council action, the December 6th council meeting has been canceled, and so the next meeting of the city council will be December 20th. Number of items there, one is the meeting for the Oaths of Office for re-elected or newly-elected council members, and so that'll, that'll, that'll be the highlight of the meeting, and then we also have the Lightsides and Holiday Nights Award winner, which is always nice in December to see how our neighbors decorate their homes, and the council will certify the general municipal election, and we have the award of contract for the Veterans Memorial Park improvements, having that park construction moving forward. And the other point I would like to make is recognizing and congratulating Chief Todd Tuggle for his appointment as the next Fire Chief for the city of San Luis Obispo. I want to note during his time here, city Santa Maria accomplished many things, some of them included completion of the Fire Department Strategic Plan, establishing and implementing the annual performance measures for emergency management operations, to include the Emergency Operations Center Activation, hosting and conducting classes for EOC operations, evaluating the current level of service for emergency medical service care in the community, and producing and publication of a GIS dashboard tracking key performance indicators of suppression and training and prevention functions. And I just want to thank Chief Tuggle for making a significant difference in our community of Santa Maria, and wish him the very best. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Next item is oral reports of council members, and Mr. Cordero, let's start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After the last council meeting, I did the Ben Hayes Show. And then on the 13th, I was at the Central Coast Truck Place where the real, where the chamber put on for Real Men Wear Pink, and it was quite an event. I was at the Veterans Stand Down. I was at the Quarterly Schools Meeting in Yourstead, Madam Mayor. I, I was unaware of what those meetings were about. Had a ribbon cutting at a church, dedication of the Bill Libin School, and the State of the City addressed by you and Mr. Stillwell, the Empty Bowls at the fairgrounds, the CCWA virtual meeting, which was also very interesting. A communiified board meeting that was taking place in Solvang, it was kind of a retreat thing, where we were there for a better part of a day. I attended the Cal City's Dinner and Paso Robles, we had quite a, quite a few members from our city there, several of them here tonight. Then I attended a dinner, excuse me, a luncheon at the Santa Barbara Foundation, at the golf course, the, the country club, and that'd be it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm still writing, it's been a busy couple of weeks. On October 19th, I attend the Quarterly School Meeting. On the 20th, I attend the dedication ceremony for the Libin Elementary School. On the 26th, I attend the State of the City. On the 28th, I attend the Housing Element Meeting. On November 3, I attend the Mobile Home Park Owners Meeting. On November 9, I attend the Smart Electric Bus Unbailing Ceremony, which was actually great and really fun, and, and congratulations to the, to the, to the team. It was the fact that, you know, instead of a ribbon cutting, connecting the cables, I think that was a great touch, and the, the rides I had right along, it was really, it was really quiet, it was really, I even stand up and trying to get a sense of what it would like, and it was, it was a great experience, and congratulations. And also have, I would like to bring to, to the table, to the council, a safety concern, as you already know, on November 9, there was a crash that unfortunately took the life of two little kids on Alvin and, and Blosser. And it just broke my heart, and I just think that we need to, we need as a city to do something, and, and I just wanted to bring it up to the, to the council and see if there's hopefully support to start working on that intersection, because it's not just this crash, but there has been multiple issues and a lot of spitting on Blosser, and I wouldn't like, you know, I wouldn't like this to happen again. So yeah, definitely, it's, if something can be done, I would, I would definitely appreciate that, my constituents will appreciate that. We, we actually already have a conversation with, with City Managers, Stillwell, and we were, there was one idea brought to the table about a roundabout, and, and they did, I walked around, I knocked on some doors, and I talked with the neighbors, and they are full supporter on, on doing something, and they would support a roundabout or something that can minimize the possibility of that happening again. I think it's, you know, we cannot control how people act, and this person, it just breaks my heart that somebody that irresponsible and who didn't care about nobody just ended up destroying the whole family, and reducing a family of five to a family of three, but inside of those, I cannot even imagine what it's going through their, the minds and the head of the parents and children that is left, so just want to bring that up, and hopefully we can do something about it. And the other point is in regards to the Housing Element Meetings, I attend, as I mentioned, the first one, it was really well put together in terms of, there was translation in Spanish, it was, they, it was really informative, the staff did a great job in terms of explaining to everybody who attend, but in terms of the times, it was put up at 3:00, 3:00 PM, and for, you know, for us, as, for most of my constituents in the northwest side, at 3:00 PM, you're still working, even I was reached out by some of them, they say, Carlos, we would like to, we wanted to be part of that meeting, but 3:00 PM is hard, even for business owners who wanted also to be part of that conversation, it was, you know, it's tough to, you as a small business owner, to leave your, your staff, leave your work, and do, and attend that meeting, so I think it would be appropriate to either have more meetings, there was one that was after, in the evening, so hopefully we can put together another meeting that can add and include, you know, the regular hard-working people, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
I don't have a report, but I'm curious of the young people we have in the audience this evening, because they've been here from beginning to end, is this a school project, or is it, what school? Homeschool, fantastic, oh my gosh, this is wonderful, and all one family, or do you have some from other families that are, that you're homeschooling? Oh, that's a great, well, thank you for doing a great job in homeschooling, and you kids are probably bored to death and would rather be doing something else, but I'm glad...
I see a nod.
I am so glad that, that you're here and you get to see a little bit of city government, so congratulations on that part, because I'm proud of you guys for doing that.
Ms. Soto?
On October 26, I attended the State of the City, great job, Madam Mayor, and City Manager, Jason Stillwell. On November 1, I had the pleasure of attending the Celebrate Philanthropy Luncheon by the Santa Barbara Foundation, where Councilmember Cordero and his lovely wife, Linda Cordero, were recognized, we are so proud of you, and grateful to you both for all the great work that you do in our community, and it was, it was wonderful getting to celebrate you both that evening, that, that day. And I believe it was November 7 that I attended the Housing Element Workshop at the library, great work to the community development team, I saw Rosie hustling there and a couple of other folks on, on staff, and so, great work, and I, I, I don't know if I want to use the word enjoyed listening, I did enjoy listening from residents, but it, it was heart-wrenching also hearing the struggles that they're dealing with, especially when it comes to housing here in the city of Santa Maria. And lastly, I do want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Escobedo when it comes to that horrific car accident that was caused by, by the DUI on, was it Alvin and Blosser? Definitely, if a roundabout, if the city staff think that a roundabout may be of, of help, please count my support for that, but also, I'm happy to work alongside First Five or any other community benefit agency here in the city of Santa Maria that can definitely start another campaign, or, or do a series on, on child's car seats, and the importance of making sure that all of our children are in car seats, definitely, because I know it's not the first accident where we've seen young, young children being ejected, and so just definitely making sure that, that we secure our little ones and, and that we protect them as much as possible, but my heart and sentiments definitely go out to the family that was impacted, and anything that we can do to prevent something like this in the future, please count my support for that.
Thank you. October 18th, I did the Ben Hayes Show, on the 19th, I attended the Project Opioid Meeting in Boulton. On the 20th, I attended the SB CAG monthly board meeting, and in the morning, the APCD in the afternoon. Attended the dedication of the Bill Libin Elementary School, and if you haven't been to that school, you really, you really need to go, it's really a treat, we had, I think, sixth graders that were giving us a tour and showing us around, and very proud of their school. On the 26th, I served at the Empty Bowls, and they didn't run out of soup this, this year as they have in the past, but, and I want to say thank you to all of the members of the community that made the bowls, because that to me is real, the soups are the highlight, but so certainly all the bowls that, that people in the community make for this event. I can't remember which Housing Element Update I attended, but I thought that was, it was very well done, very informative. On the 29th, I attended the Dia de los Muertos Celebration, and on the November 1, the Celebrate Philanthropy Luncheon, and Mr. and Mrs. Cordero were acknowledged, and along with George and Debbie Adam, and they, they do such a good job, I think, of picking the people that really, really have contributed to our community. On the 2nd, I did mock interviews for Partners in Education, which is another group that I belong to with the County Board of Education, and on the 4th, I attended Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, and did the Partners in Education Meeting, and the Elected Leaders Forum to Address Homelessness. And let's see, on the November 10th, the Mayor's Teen Council that I do at Santa Maria High School, and at Pioneer High School, and then I did the Marion Community Clinic, had a ribbon cutting, and this clinic is on the northwest side of town, just a beautiful clinic up there, and for those of you who remember, Dr. Juretic was at the clinic on Bunny Street at one time, and he was there for this ribbon cutting. The November 11th, I attended the Veterans Day Event at the Santa Maria Cemetery. On the 12th of November, the Rotary Club, the Rotary Club of Santa Maria celebrated their centennial, and they also had the Don Melby Award that went to Cheryl and Ted Maddox from Santa Maria, and they do so much in our community, and they're, the McDonald's people, and they're very quiet about it, about what they do, but they do a lot in the community, especially with youth, and are in schools and at Hancock. And on the 14th, I attended the SB CAG Broadband Ad Hoc Committee, which I have said before, is great, everyone's moving in the same direction, and we can't wait to get this thing going, and so that all the communities, and, and, you know, we, we consider Santa Maria is able to really step ahead and do a lot of things, but at the same time, we have to bring up other communities that don't have the resources that we have, so that all the people in our community, and especially with the people that cannot afford the broadband into their home, we really, we, this really came to our attention, especially during COVID, when a lot of the kids couldn't go online to do their studies and to further their education, so, and that is it. So ladies and gentlemen, this concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.